Seven o'clock, I'd like to open the Chatham Plan Board for March twenty 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 four. First up, we have a public hearing for GM Properties LLC, the villages, multi-family units at thirty-five North Main Street. The applicant has requested to be continued till April third. We have a motion to continue.
No, we're not opening them.
Yeah, we're not open, but we have a motion to move this agenda item on April third.
Okay, yeah, so.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, all right. Next up, we have a public hearing for ZP Battery Development Company LLC, Batteries Energy Storage Systems at two eighty-eight South Bridge Street, which is one sixty-nine. They have been, they have requested to continue to April third as well. I think by this point they're having issue with complying with the law.
Yeah, and we haven't opened that public hearing either.
Correct. So.
I'll make a motion to move it to April third.
Second. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right. So seeing we have a public hearing for seven ten, we can't open that or do that to seven ten. We're gonna move the A and R. So we have a one on Jennings Road for Le Carre.
Yeah, this is basically, they emerge in one lot, one of the house lots, I mean, two of the house lots. So, I mean, that's all they're doing as far as the A and R, they had original approvals, they had a few separate lots. They even now decide to merge them both into one lot.
This is up in, is this phase two or phase three of Jennings Road?
I believe it's phase three.
Phase three, all right. So I guess you had a property one that bought two lots that were next to each other, wants to put up, use two, put the lot, put the house in, right?
Yeah, basically in the center on the property line, the only way you do that is merge two lots together. So it's pretty straightforward, you know?
Nothing on the lot built right now at all?
Not, no, not yet. They're not, they're, they have to get this done before they, then they have to file the deed, then they get to build the permit.
Any questions or anything on?
No, I'm not being deterred there.
Yeah. You have a motion to approve the A and R. You can motion to approve the A and R for the entire, on Jennings Building.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Abstain.
Aye.
I don't think that one. That one's not dead. Okay, listen on the paper, they're probably wrong, right?
Well, it's actually the same day, in case they don't endorse, but it's actually the same day. Your approval today, you endorsing after that, so.
Great. Next up, we got other business unknown at time of posting. What came in this week is, well, for Tame and Woods, Tim's been doing work up there, some outstanding work, he was on the grades report and stuff, and he submitted a revised as-built as well. So, um, just kind of really not moved anywhere as far as the procurement officer and moving along and.
We're going to.
Yeah, totally bond.
Correct.
And at this point, according to our highway, if the highway supervisor and Mike Andrade hasn't done a final inspection out there, Tim's aware of that and will let him do it, of course. But you've got a broken manhole cover and a piece of curb that needs to be fixed. And then Nick would be satisfied that, you know, the property's ready to, you know, have the road acceptance, which can be done at the fall town meeting. So, and Tim is also agreeable to let us hold money to make sure that all the trees bloom in spring. So if there are any dead ones, we would have the funds to, you know, have, have new trees planted if required. And so, and do the town administration, well, we should talk about whether it's, at this point, just to, you know, have it put on the town really in the fall. And, you know, Tim has done the maintenance and everything, and we can hold all of his bond until, you know, he receives road acceptance, to make sure that everything is followed through. Or the plan board still has the, you know, authority to move forward and pull the bond. But at this point in time, doesn't appear that he'll have a whole lot to accomplish, you know, to be able to have road acceptance. So it's, it's purely up to the board, you had already voted to pull the bond.
Right.
But just, I don't know, he, he took it upon himself to go out there and finish the work up there. He did some fencing, he did some work under the protection basins. Why? I don't know, but, because he was fully aware of the bond, you know, being pulled, but.
But we can still hold the, everything left on the bond till the fall meeting, or is he looking for a reduction in the bond?
I mean, I would recommend that the board does it to ensure that he follows through.
Yeah.
He wants to follow through just as much, well, I shouldn't say that, but, you know, he states that he wants to follow through, as far as he's planning more, wants to get them done. But it, it's too late to get them on the spring meeting, the annual town meeting. So the only thing we can do is for them on the fall town meeting and, you know, require Mike Andrade. It looks like he's addressed everything for, in his revised as-built that Mike Andrade acquired. And with, short of the two fixes he has to do over there and, you know, potentially replant some trees, should they not, be, if they're not alive, they don't bloom in the spring, because he's had a few of them up there that are kind of shady, whether they were gonna work or not. So, and he still has this big plywood sign at the beginning of the subdivision, it's gonna come down. And in, here is Mr. Reardon, National Bridge is the one that's holding him up or holding everyone up as far as turning on the light at the beginning of the high road at intersection and Hill Road. It's not Mr. Reardon's fault, the town is taking over the light, he requested it to do it, they said they're going to do it, but they haven't done it yet. So, but that's not as a result of anything Mr. Reardon's done, this is a result of getting National Bridge to actually do it. So, but this is a board that already voted, said that we, you know, discuss it with the board on how you want to handle it at this point.
I guess it's something to think about.
I mean, yeah, a decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but it's just.
Still be holding enough money in the bond.
Actually better.
Yeah.
And I haven't given to Mike Andrade to review the revised as-built or anything, because I wanted to discuss it with the board before we do anything, so.
I mean, is he, what is he accomplishing? I mean, he could be working, you know, working in a circle, or is he path to direction from Mike from previous?
Yeah, he has direction from Mike. Mike had a long list of items that had to be taken care of. And, you know, as of this year, at this point, Mr. Reardon, so they'll be in charge of, you know, keeping the attention bases clean and everything. At least for the balance of this year, the town will boost on until we actually take over.
Well, with the cleanest attention base, you'll release the list.
So, it's a, I mean, we, the board, like I said, the board doesn't have to make a decision tonight. So I'm just, you know, putting it out there that the board can, you know, think about if you want to the next meeting or whatever you like to do at this point.
So. So the T, the town administrator, no one that's taken on like.
No, you, like, you know, do they are, he said, well, based on the amount asked to go to town meeting, you know, and of course, then we have to add prevailing wage and everything. And if he's primarily done everything he wants, particularly in case of Mike Andrade and the highway supervisor, which are the two primary people, you want to make sure that he's satisfied all their concerns, then, you know, there might not be any, you might not gain anything by pulling the bond. And we can hold the money, so that's not an issue. It was, yeah, it's two-edged sword.
Should we, should we give him another deadline? You know, it's, it's, yeah, I, I understand he's making progress, but should we stop what we're doing and wait for him to, to complete? I guess that's a question, but something to think about, Greg.
Yeah.
The, the, the one question, actually, Donnie, bringing up a good point is, and I don't know that up, but what the date for getting it on the warrant is for the fall? I didn't check with Andrew, I don't know if they know that at this point, but I did try to find out from Andrew if they've set that date already for the fall town meeting. If he misses the deadline, then when the board, if it's already voted, that they can, you know, pull the bond, so.
Then the work won't be done till next year again?
Yeah.
But I, I mean, at this point, he said he, he's already, you know, awarded the manhole cover, got chipped from probably something, you know, and then piece of curb got hit. So those are the two outstanding items at the moment, the big items, you know?
On the road. Yeah.
Did the lights ever get the streetlights?
Yeah, they're all, all those streetlights within the subdivision work. And there was a cut in the road where they had a pretty new communication line, but Nick isn't concerned about it, you know, that he thinks it was done well, so it will hold up X number of years, so it won't become an issue for the town two years from now.
Little Walter giving the jury.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's all right. So you want to hold up, or you try to find out more about when the warrant?
Yeah, let's do that.
Actually, ready for the fall town meeting.
And it would be, be good to get Mike involved as quickly as possible, so if he's meandering down that road, at least he doesn't do a lot, and he's, well, I thought he told me to do this, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just saved him from himself.
Mr. Reardon, in, in, it, it doesn't want to, he, his escrow account's basically depleted, you know, almost at zero. However, the bond money can be used to pay for Mike Andrade's services, so that, you know, we do have the, we are in control of the funds to make sure that Mike gets paid. So I can, you know, request Mike to go out there just to confirm that he's satisfied with all the work that's been done up there and make sure nothing else is popped up in the meantime, so that we're all on the same page of whether it's ready and.
All right. All right, next up, we are at seven fifteen now, we have a seven-ten public hearing for Gunther LLC, Cal Hill Road, through reduced frontage lots, special permits. And according to section two hundred dash five point one-three and two hundred dash two point G of the Chatham zoning bylaw, the Chatham Plan Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March sixth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM, in the Plan Board Office at the Gregory George McKent Street Building, thirty-seven Main Street, via Zoom meeting ID two-one-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven. On the application of Gunther LLC, Field Box two-two-five-nine, Montreux, California, nine-three-nine-four-two. The approval of two reduced frontage lots containing approximately ten point nine acres for purposes of building two new single-family homes. The property is located in Sesame Ave, thirty-seven block, A Lot Five, and is in the agricultural A and R sixteen district. Copies of the reduced frontage law special permit and application are available at the Plan Board Office and Town Corks Office during regular business hours. Any person in which you may be heard should appear at the time and place designated for this meeting, members of the public who to listen and watch the meeting, what we may do in the following manner, video participation, H E T P S colon, access, backslash zoom dot U S, backslash two-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven, meeting ID two-one-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven, phone access one-six-four-six-five-five-eight, eight-six-five-six. All right, we have a couple letter here from H S and T Group with a special permit as well as we have a math as well.
I have both sides.
Yeah. And also grades report attached dated March thirteenth.
Yeah, he's, the applicant has basically addressed everything on the grave report that Mike has no outstanding concerns with the application at this point. They're going to be both single driveways, no common driveway with this one.
Yeah. Great. I think previously, years ago, we, the board recalls, I know it's different members, but we previously had approved reduced frontage lots and common driveways where that has since expired slash been withdrawn. So this is totally new, with different, same concept, but different, um.
Yeah, the common driver that had previously been proposed was not adequate for the environment, it was too steep, basically, so.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Ross, I can't see the plans, but is it similar to, excuse me, is it similar to the two lots that were approved previously, or are they?
It is, it's on Cal Hill Road, they each are gonna have about twenty-five to twenty-six feet of road frontage for access, I take it. And then the, the frontage is on, runs out though, Route twenty as well.
Okay, so it's, it's kind of similar to the, the last design. Does the, um, the mid-state trail go through these properties and is that affected?
Um, it goes through, uh, uh, two of the abutting properties, where see, Mr. Gunter, I don't know if he's actually followed through with it, but last I knew, talking to Lisa Westwell, is the trail, the properties where the trail is, uh, were gonna be donated to the Cheltenham Land Trust, so that, um, Mr. Gunter was actually doing for tax purposes, he didn't hide that, but so he was donating the land to the child away interest for those two lots through the trail, the state trail went through. So they, instead of just to trip amusement with the trail, they will now own the land.
Ha, has that gone through, or is that just still in the?
I believe it had, because they did it the end of two thousand twenty-three, before the end of two thousand twenty-three, so that he, for tax purposes, he wanted to get it done. And last I talked to Lisa Westwell, she confirmed that they were doing that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that doesn't slip through and this, this doesn't affect the trail at all.
No, the, these properties are outside the area where the trail leasement was.
Good, thank you.
Go right ahead, John. So is this, well, these lots, five of the lots on the, uh, three-twenty, is like this district there?
No, well, these lots actually don't above Route twenty. They, no, this, this, this one.
Let's look B and lot.
Oh, so.
It's lot B, lot, lot four and six. Is that what it is?
Yeah, this five R.
Five R.
Different lot, but it's these two lots up here.
Oh, so they're talking about lot.
Narrow front.
Lot four and lot six, all right, sorry.
Five R and six.
Yep. Oh, five R and six, all right, sorry.
Yeah, the lot's above Route twenty, the lot's saying, been there.
Gotcha.
Donated to the child and trust. And somebody in this property is the property that where Joe Point.
Yep, correct.
Facility was put where they were working on a easement that would come from the Hamlin Woods Development through that property and onto this property.
That's my clarification.
Yeah, there, I have a larger plan.
No, that's all right. I should have picked up on it, because it shows what the proposed house is.
Yeah, that's what it.
In the proposed drive.
Yeah, it's, it's narrowed there, so with the setback line and everything, it gets a little busy.
Right on the setbacks. That was on the left.
Yep. Any other questions? Open, what has any question, we'll open up to the opportunity for the public. All right, you're gonna open it up for questions from the public here. If you, anyone from the public has any questions on this reduced frontage lots on Cal Hill Road, please raise your hand and speak up. All right. Hearing none, seeing none? You have a motion, you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close public hearing for, um, Carol Hill Road, reduced frontage lots, five R and six.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
That is a special permit.
Oh, aye.
Okay, all right, aye. All right, unanimous. All right, do we have a motion to approve the special permit for the reduced frontage lots of five R and six on Carol Hill Road for two reduced frontage lots?
I made the motion.
No, I'm fine.
Make the motion thirteen, fourteen, lots on Carol Hill Road, five R and six. Uh, the two reduced frontage lots, those Gunther LLC.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Aye. Right.
This, before we open our next application, I just want, what more I miss knowing, me and Jim tonight.
Go ahead.
I've spoken to, uh, Lee Blackwell from Amazon.
Yep.
Or Blue Water Group, referenced some issues they have over there on the Route one sixty-nine entrance, and they're making numerous holes in the walls that everybody's curious about. I mean, I think I pretty much know what they are, but that wasn't part of the original plan, so. Mr. Blackwell's gonna come to our April third meeting to explain, to give an update of what's going on in the board. Were you able to ask many questions regarding the project, because they've got a few things out there that maybe were a field changer, you know, that weren't part of the original application, so. We just want to make sure everything's addressed, because as everyone knows, they had a fault with one of the walls, where it caved in. So we want to make sure that doesn't happen again, and so. And I stated, um, I requested him to come to the April third meeting, say he would.
Have they submitted any field modification?
Well, you know, the things that we have issues with, we have issues, they, they placed a telephone pole with the one sixty-nine entrance as a result of bringing power in from the temporary substation. And also, there's been a lot of issues with the property that's near the one sixty-nine entrance. And then the whole wall issue, anybody realized them, you would drive them by, this is also, these are the holes all through the wall, so. I mean, I know they've had issues with the manufacturer, the wall, you know, the stone, but maybe this is their solution, but we're not aware of it. So we'd like this to have it explained to the board, so that everybody's on the same page.
All right. All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for Boston Outdoor Living, AKA Green Boys Site Plan Modification at two twenty St. Edward Road. They have been, they have requested to be continued to April third. The motion to continue Boston Outdoor Living to April third.
I make motion to, um, continue the, Boston Outdoor Living, AKA Green Boys, till April third.
Yeah, unfortunately, we've been inundated with applications, meaning money too.
Yep.
So for him to get back to the engine, the African's engine, to give the African engineer time to get back to Mike, it's taken longer than normal, just because we have numerous applications before us right now, so.
Second up. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Bye.
Aye. All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for Stone Reduced Furnish Lot and Common Driveway Special Permit on Gale Road. They have requested to be continued to May first.
Yes, Stone, her application before the conservation commission, her engineer hadn't submitted one to the conservation commission, and her clock was running out, so that I said, you either have to request a continuous or the plan of it was going to have to take action on that. So she gave us.
All right, do we have a motion to continue that public hearing for, uh, Reduced Furnish Lot Common Driveway on Gale Road?
So, um, to, um, yeah, continue till May fe, May first.
Second up. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, it's unanimous. All right, next up, we have a public hearing, continue for ESA, proposed zoning bylaw amendment to add utility scale battery energy storage system overlay district. Last year, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good, all right.
How are you?
Good.
Good, thank you, planning board. Um, I know you have printout, I also provided these booklets, which may be slightly more user-friendly, if you'd like to look through these as well. Certainly. And just like a cover memo, I believe, is also in your packets.
Thank you.
Is that Mr. Mesk?
Yeah.
See, I just got that, yeah. Here you are, sir. Here you are, sir. I thank you, board. Since our first meeting in January fourth, um, we've made multiple iterations to this project. Appreciate your patience through this time and I actually think just the cadence of us meeting and. And talking on this issue has helped make for a better product overall. Um, there's been a lot of. A lot of uh participation and collaboration from not only staff. But um members of the board and and members of the community. Uh, special thanks to Captain Carlson, Mr. Curtis Meskis, uh, Ms. Laurie Degnan and and others who participated in this process. Since we last spoke, we, I think we, last meeting, we touched on minimum lot size and minimum frontage. Just as an update, we have added a minimum lot size requirement of four acres, and that actually. That actually helps to change the proposed boundaries of this overlay. Um, which lessed out multiple properties that did not meet that minimum requirement. Uh, moreover, we discussed the minimum frontage of basically zero, and I believe Mr. Meskis. Met with legal representation to determine that that was um legally. Osher, I guess, um, not, or at least not, you know, in in violation with Massachusetts state law. Um, that does go a long way to help provide for the flexibility necessary to make sure we're maximizing land efficiently or the use of land efficiently and. And ultimately making for uh the best product possible, the best project. Um, there is one small line that's not represented in the printout, but is on this memo. That I'd like to add to section two hundred dash five dot two two C three, which is the applicable. Applicability of the ESOD, the energy storage overlay district. To add the words on one or more continuous parcels, which speaks to another topic that was re- made. Uh, reference last meeting. And um, I guess with the last, sort of the last thing I wanted to point your attention to. Were the two maps that are in this book. Um, one that shows the, and I'm Mr. Clay, I don't know if you have access to. This booklet, but I can, I can put this on the uh. I can fire this up onto the laptop as well. But I'd like to point your attention to that parcels that we are including in this overlay on page eleven. And then on page. Twelve and thirteen. It's the same map, but I've added basically design constraints, and so this reflects. Um, areas that we would not be able to build in, and it's not inclusive of every area. For instance, we don't take into account topography. In which there are a number of parcels that just given the topography would not be a feasible project site. But I've included buffers from wetlands, streams, uh, the two hundred feet from public right of way, the two hundred feet from residential buildings. Um, as well as all of the transmission easements and whatnot. That would preclude any, any development in those areas. So when you really kind of slice and dice and take all of that off the table. Less than half of this entire area will be developable for the use of grid scale battery storage. I've also highlighted in blue the parcels that are owned by New England Power Company. And. To, to a large extent, we, we would expect that these parcels wouldn't necessarily develop as storage. Um, it's more likely that. They would use these parcels for expansion of substations and transmission lines. Um, but even if they were to pursue storage, it may be the case that they have certain, I guess, they can enjoy certain. Um, benefits beyond what the. Town of Charlton code provides for in in just in their site. Um, so with that, I think that's really the the gist of it. I I'm happy to walk through any deep, any specific details on, starting on page fifteen is essentially what we're proposing as the final text. And I've added some annotations along the way just to explain the spirit and sort of the decision behind the codes. Um. And let's see, I think. I think with that, I'll rest my case, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wes.
Go ahead.
Um, or he is the head chair on the north side of the map, right?
That represents the town of Sturbridge.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize for not labeling that, but yeah, essentially that's the edge of Charlton.
Good, good, good.
Now, Wes, I know he, on the page nine, we did the buildable area.
Right.
Did you happen to? What would it be the max buildup with that area? So I know there was another thrown out at the last meeting. Not by you, but as far as what the.
In terms of uh megawatts?
Yes.
Um, I didn't calculate.
Well, just based upon only using forty, less than forty percent of the overlay is buildable due to constraints, what would?
I could see, I could see at most. To just laying my cards out there, I think there would be room for one more project other than the two that were proposed. That would be, you know, between a hundred fifty and two hundred megawatts.
Okay. Oh, so.
That's what you're proposing.
That is what we're proposing, um.
You just.
For our two. So in addition to those, I could see feasibly given just the land development opportunity. That there would be an additional project that could fit feasibly within this district. Now, I should mention that there are other constraints, including capacity of the substation. And so, you know, there's sort of it's um. Yeah, there, there's limiting factors that will speak to that, but I think just based on. Things like the setbacks we're, we're imposing, so for instance, two hundred feet from public right of ways and residential buildings, one hundred feet from buildable lot lines. Fifty feet minimum from wetlands and streams. Um. There, there's really only, I see really only one area that has the potential for another project beyond what ours.
Is for the web and it's not within the purview of the planning board, but conservation commission. I don't know if you too that have any different standard, but I. We've been. White lines is a hundred feet.
Okay.
I mean, that's not a. Planning board.
Right, that's.
I want to base commission, so it's just, I'm saying it's gonna let me do a little.
Yeah, that could, that would, that might mean there's even less than what I'm, what I'm estimating.
Thanks, Wes.
Yes, sir. And do you have a bigger map here if you'd like to see that as well?
Anyone else in the board have a question, comment?
And Mr. Fontaine, I see you looking at that page, just sort of the evolution of. This overlay, how it's sort of been. Been right sized for this area.
Yeah. Nice detailed work.
Oh, good, thank you. Even labeling the lots. That helps.
Anyone from the board has any questions also? Like I asked, nothing from the public? Is it a comments of question? Go ahead, Lauren. Who knows come?
It's on that Google area that you mentioned.
Yes.
Um. So you said you possibly three projects about two hundred megawatts each?
Yeah.
DC.
Um, megawatt, power, AC.
All right, we, most of our bylaw go by DC because that's what's actually produced on the lot, you know, it goes through the transformer. But, okay, so based upon, you said forty percent of the overlay is buildable. Forty eight percent of three hundred and twenty nine acres is a hundred and fifty seven point nine two acres. The project in Medway has two hundred and fifty megawatts and about six acres. So although you may only plan three, I'm very concerned that we could. See over six thousand megawatts if you follow that same formula. So while there, you might not plan it. The possibility is there, correct? If I follow less than forty eight percent big acreage.
If I may offer another perspective, I think when it comes to estimating buildable potential. Based on acreage at this scale, it's. It's difficult to do those back of map in. Calculations accurately. I think, I think those, if we were looking at a much bigger. Statistic, like area of study, then maybe that would be a better rule of thumb, like what you're suggesting.
Don't follow.
Well, I, when we, I guess I'm sure, I can show this now. Not every acre is created equal in this, in the build of a lot, so you know, point your attention to even thirty two A six, a lot thirty two A six. It already has a solar array on it. And there is some acreage that could potentially be used for battery storage that's outside of. Um, all the setbacks, the transmission lines and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
However, that acreage is limited both from a top. Topography standpoint and just other, other factors of. Of um access, and so. There's a few other parcels where you, you know, even on the parcels we're looking at. There's acreage on those parcels that we would never be able to actually do a project on, like thirty two A twelve. Uh, you know, there's a few little slivers of land that technically are outside of all setbacks and all um.
That's seventeen acres.
I'm sorry?
That says it's seventeen acres.
What, thirty two A six?
No, you, you mentioned twelve, didn't you? Thirty two A twelve.
Yeah.
Right, the, the parcel is seventeen acres and includes a wetlands. And it also has portions of which are um. Within two hundred feet of a resident.
Correct, but that's what you included in your summary of being forty eight percent buildable. You've already took that out.
Correct, yeah, it's a set out. And I, I didn't go through the, I guess, I didn't go through the brain damage of, you know, kind of seeing what footprints fit within what slivers of.
All right, thirty two A six, the solar is on thirteen acres of a forty acre parcel, forty point seven five.
Right, and we're limited on how much parcel we can clear based on the code, so we can't clear more than thirty percent of the parcel.
That is our, that's open land. Where, where did the thirty percent cleared come from?
That's in the large scale system, large scale solar ordinance, which we reference. We include by reference in the, in the energy storage.
Okay.
System, and that was, that was a recommendation by Mr. Meskis to, rather than recreate the wheel, just.
Okay, so did the thirty percent, your, your calculation of forty eight include the thirty percent? Deforestation or?
Yeah, I mean, basically, there's already a good portion of that property, property that has been cleared. Um. I think, I think I'll meet you in the middle of that. I, I do think that there. There are perhaps areas that I'm not conceiving of that could potentially host a project. But I, I don't think it's all forty eight percent of even what I've defined as billable. I could go through the additional effort of taking out, you know, topography.
Well, as we know, solar went in plenty of places that topography wasn't correct for anything.
Right, and, and so.
Made it work.
Yeah, solar definitely from a engineering standpoint can take advantage of topography.
It's just a lot, it's very large, the possibilities, so um. Charlton has, like I mentioned at the last meeting. Austin forced solar on us and we weren't prepared. We wrote by law the batteries, so we were prepared, so we wouldn't be. Stressed out and, and feeling like everything's rush rush. We allow battery energy storage. Up to five megawatts on a one acre lot in three zones. We allow them at the thirty so of projects, so. Having this all encompassing, here we go, Charlton, let's do it again. You can have the most. Battery energy storage in the state, it's a lot for residents to accept. Um, and granted, it's just a small number right now that are aware, but bringing this to town meeting. With our support, with planning support, may send the wrong message that they've vetted everything that the worst case scenario. There's no cap still, there's no host agreement. I just think that there's no reason why we can't slow down. Um, while I appreciate how nice you guys have been handling this and dealing with us, it's, it's been very nice. But we have to think of the worst case scenario. Charlton is the host for the energy for Massachusetts with LNG, solar and already batteries, so. I'd like to see a build out of what we already allow on our zoning before we open the floodgates, and that's exactly what's gonna happen. You're locked and loaded, which is great, you're good business sense. I think the New England Power parcels are prime. There should be no reason why they wouldn't be allowed to do. They're adjacent. To what's already been there, but when you, you know, you look out of Carpenter Hill Road and you take fifty acres. In the middle of the woods, people on the surrounding roads have no idea this is coming. Um, I think we've been disingenuous in letting people know, no one pays attention to humans, so. Sorry, my two cents, thank you.
So Wes, getting back to the. The buildable area, was it total one hundred to two hundred, one fifty to two hundred megawatts unrevusable?
That's my estimate.
Because Lauren, you, the way that you talk, you said it was one fifty to two hundred per site, per, per project that they had.
Per project.
Per project, okay, all right.
He said it's a project.
Okay.
All right, you were around two hundred when you approached the board in January.
Okay.
And it's been kind of fleet to one fifty to one seventy five.
Yeah.
But the lot can handle it, it's just. Are we gonna gain anything for it? Six landowners are going to see the benefit.
What's the, does he assess it on what's the tax revenue on?
I asked you guys to check into that.
Did we get any answer from her?
It's a, it's a public utility.
Problem is, it's a new, it's a new use that Charlton isn't familiar with, so you know, they share a lot of experience with. This type of facility, you know, small, the five megawatts isn't so bad, but when you get something that's.
This isn't easy.
It's hard to put a number on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Degman, if I may ask, just to clarify, i- is the issue the size of? The, for instance, the amount of storage that could be hosted on a site or the total acreage that could be developed?
I guess it's the total that you could see. We would be the largest in the state right now. No, two hundred and fifty megawatts is the largest right now.
Because I, I guess one, one thing I want to just point out is when we're talking about, for instance, saying two hundred megawatts. That's essentially electricity at any given moment that we could send to the grid. But then there's also the idea of storage, um, so for instance, you know, I guess think of it like a faucet, you know, if I have a bucket. That's one thousand megawatt hours. And I have a faucet that can pump out water at two hundred fifty megawatts, and I have four hours of water that I can use, and so. I think one thing to note is that. Two fifty likely is just kind of the max of what is gonna be sent to the grid based on the technical feasibility of the substation, but what might change, what you might see as. Uh, you might, what I think you would see is a bigger bucket, not necessarily a bigger fa- bigger faucet, if that makes sense.
Faucet doesn't affect us, the bucket affects us.
So the bucket is.
Right.
Also, in, in, in this instance, you know. The, the footprint doesn't necessarily increase to increase the bucket. The technology is able to do more per acre over time. We see that. You know, eat these batteries have a higher land use efficiency over time. They, they get smaller. Um, the chemistry becomes more, uh, I guess. It's gonna become improved, the technology improves, and so it evolves. It evolves, so we can, you know, do more with less footprint.
But once the footprint is allowed, once you are given this room to have batteries. And technology evolves and gets better, you're not gonna tell them you're gonna make it small, you're gonna. And technology evolves and gets better, you're not gonna tell them you're gonna make it small, you're gonna go for the maximum profit. So it doesn't matter. What size the desk is, it's the size of the room and. Do we want that? Right now, not saying it'll never happen. But there's some new, new things coming up, if I can, boss.
Go right ahead.
Governor Haley created a commission to accelerate citing and permitting of clean energy infrastructure. They just had meetings the last two weeks. I participated in the meeting, they're taking into account everyone's ideas. And complaints, they are still gonna do what they wanna do, but the report will be released on March twenty seventh. So this committee. Could help us, I mean, it takes away local control, but it could help us because. It's such a new industry and we're still learning and there is. Misinformation out there too. Um, you know, I've seen it, I've probably been guilty of it over the last five years, but this committee is. Governor Haley's commission. Will take it over just like the Department of Public Utilities just did for the Siting Board. This project. Is green, it's, it's gonna green light big development now. I'm somewhat concerned. Wes, if you waited and went before this board that we're all gonna be forced to deal with. I don't see the urgency of allowing it. This year. There'll be um, more. A think tank helping us with this commission, if it turns out. To be helpful, but either way, we are gonna lose our local control. Allowing this overlay. Is not really a local control, cause we're not getting anything from it, except six people. So again, I think we should wait for this commission from Governor Haley, cause she's.
We know they're gonna allow it.
They will, but the, to be, the Department of Public Utility allowed Medways at two hundred and fifty and they have a host agreement. We didn't write it in, we need to write it in, it's not in the solar, I know you keep referring to overlaying the solar guidelines. Solar only mentions a pilot and local tax. So they hopefully would pay what you and I would pay for our house on our land. And not just continue to be allowed taxing of their land, so. There's no host mandate in our town. Um, so for the Department of Public Utilities to be working with Medway. On something that's small, small compared to this.
Yeah, I asked, I'm stating a question, it first, I'm not familiar enough with a Medway facility, did the Medway facility have frontage?
Oh, yeah.
That's the, the one issue, I mean, it's totally within the plan board, Furbey. This would be the only use in the town of Charlton that would not require road frontage. I mean, even the solar fields, they are doing subdivision, even though it was just a paper code, sack or anything, they had to go. Through the process to get the frontage, the frontage on a road. The, the, the planning board does this, it could possibly. That a precedent for other types of users say, well, you didn't make them do it, why are you making us? You know, they, they could be an argument to be made there. And uh, so the. I just recommend the board give that some careful consideration and decision making because. This would be the only use in the town of Charlton that would not require road frontage.
And you open a Pandora's box, so.
As it pertains to that, we, there's an email from. There's only four miles.
And, and there's ways, you know, we dealt with it, we, even the other battery facility, five big ones they do a. You know, a subdivision is basically a paper road, you know. Termin, but they still have to go through the process, so.
Yeah.
The property has frontage on a public road.
That should, we should, we should stick the same rules, then underlay those. To get the land right and develop, because someday maybe they, they'll turn back to having these functional lots. And they'll, they'll be, they won't be non functioning, we'll have.
And I know under a special permit, yes, the planning board can put any restrictions on if they choose to do so, but. If we allow it in the bylaws under a special permit, you might be taking away the authority for the legal arguments. The planning board could possibly have, since somebody challenged the boards. Is we deny an over, takes and say, sorry, you don't have frontage, or you let them do it. Even though it's a totally different type of use and everything, once you open up that can of worms, it's hard to go back.
Just one point of clarification on that, it's not that the frontage, the minimum frontage is. It, it's not through the special permit. That there's no minimum frontage, it's through this overlay district. So there is no precedent when it comes to special use permit approval, it's only through this overlay district that that's. Applied to these properties and. The only use that's permitted in an overlay district that can enjoy that special. Overlay district standard is energy storage, so if it was to, you know, become a future project. It would be subject to the underlying zoning requirements, including the frontage requirements, so that, you know, for instance, if it turned into housing or into commercial. This overlay wouldn't provide that, you know.
I understand that and it, and it's all, I appreciate you, you're. That. Associating that with the overlay, our more concern is that, well, we wanna do the same thing you did, you let them did that, it could be a totally different purpose. So why does the energy stores have a special overlay district I want?
I want my own overlay.
Yeah, I want my own, I want my MTV, you know.
That may be a rational.
It is not rational because.
We have tons of, we would have tons of open, all that, tons of areas that would, that'll apply to, wouldn't we?
Yeah, it is, it would be a nightmare for the town.
Yeah. As you all well, we've, we've already been focused about having a potential. Some large scale solar facility and some of those lots. Are, you know, on separate ownership and everything, they could potentially consider landlocked and let's immerse together. So if we allow this, do we, you know, this. Are we creating a problem for ourselves at the town level or something like that?
I don't think so, I think that there's a defensible argument, given the way that this is outlined. That. Uh, rationalizes why minimum frontage is not required in this instance, and that is supported by Mr. Meskis's email as well. And there's already overlay districts in existence in Charlton, so that this is not. New to Charlton in the sense that an overall district would be adopted. Um, and it's also not unprecedented that. Overlay districts have special qualifications and that's kind of the nature of an overlay district.
Our current overlay district is not one that says you don't need frontage.
Well, that particular instance, but there are other types of. Enjoyments and benefits from overlays that are not included in this one, for instance, in the medical overlay district, there's all sorts of. Departures from the standard code that are only enjoyed by that district, and that's really the nature of an overlay.
And the consideration of that, the, you know, the, the batteries will even be admitted in. On most of these properties because of the zoning of the current zoning of the properties. So you're already getting um.
Yeah.
Special consideration, because most of these properties, if you come in and propose a project under the current zoning. Mostly these properties wouldn't allow for a battery storage facility based on our current zoning.
Right.
So you are getting the special consideration that you are now being allowed to put a battery storage facility in a location that normally. Wouldn't be allowed in the town of Charlton, so. And it ends up being a, a legal argument, the town will go through great, you know. Expense and everything in legal terms and everything trying to defend itself. We have a chance here at the planning boards to get it right the first time.
Prevent the liability.
Right, so that we don't have to deal with that two, three years from now. You know, it's a very simple solution, we're not saying you can't do it, we're just saying we need to have frontage on the. A public road, just like we do for any other use in the town of Charlton. We're not singling them out.
Can we get one of our attorneys to give their opinion on the, that precedent factor, because that might be a danger.
What, the frontage?
On if we allow that, if, do we open ourselves up for future?
Oh. I think that, I think we kind of have some sort of a.
Between.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, I guess we should use one of our attorneys and get an opinion on that.
Yeah.
And I was in on that negotiation and the attorney did say the planning board has the. You know, authority to decide whether they, it needs to be done or not.
Through a special use permit, but it.
You know, it's not something that's normal, you know, so, and then, like you said from a liability, we're always setting a precedent for.
We can do almost anything as long as it's, if we don't go against the Commonwealth, but. Do we, do we want to?
Yeah. I mean, how to hold up, I mean, let's just say if you do go through the, it is a special permit, board can use their discretion. So you take it on a case by case basis, based upon the particular property, when that they do have sufficient access to. We're staying at being a residential house plus the service we're able to come into service the. The, the uh, battery storageers as well as even during construction.
And I mean, it's a fairly simple process and we've done with the solar fields, it's been in a paper code, sack and problems solved, you know.
That's the other thing.
But also have frontage in that they're complying with zoning just as much as any other use.
I think the biggest issue is when you start talking frontage is, you know. I would get a piece of property that's got two hundred feet of frontage, okay? If they only need ten feet. Of that to ten or fifteen or twenty feet. I still have a hundred and eighty feet of property, you know, you still have a hundred and eighty feet of property, but the thing is. If you turn, I'm just playing devil's advocate on this. If you turn around and say, well, you have to have a hundred feet of frontage, okay? They turn around and get a hundred feet of frontage. Now, instead of having. That project set back, so nobody's gonna see it. Okay, so you're not gonna see it from the road, you're gonna be driving through. You won't even notice it's there, to all of a sudden. Boom, it's right there as you're driving down the road, I mean, tha- that's the thing, I have, I have been to that up by Medway to see that facility. And I'll tell you, it's not bad. But would, you know, would you wanna look at your. You know, as you drive, you know, in your neighborhood, you know, you're driving down the road and then, okay, I mean, I would get that big monstrosity, you know, it's the Amazon. I mean, that, you get that, you get the power plant down on one sixty nine, which is generating noise galore. And, I mean. They, they have the proper frontage, but the thing is.
You see it.
You see it. Okay, it's not like. Okay, it's there, but it's not, you know, it's not there, it's not noticed, it doesn't give you that, you know, that rural look. I mean, right now you go by a substation, most of the substations sit back enough that. You don't, you, 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 you drive right past, except for the high tension lines, you really don't even notice that the substation's there. And that, you know, that's one of the things that, being in a rural town, I've been in a rural town all my life. And I've watched the town change, I watched, we went from a light bulb down on one sixty nine. The traffic lights up and down Route twenty and Jersey barrier up and down Route twenty. Okay, I've seen. You know, what, you know, I've seen the town is evolving, the town's growing. And. What I can, I can see is, you know, I'm looking at the maps here and that and. You know, you say, well, it's only six people are, are, are taking advantage of it. Yeah, but the other factor of it is. That. It's not gonna be. Seen, sort of like, aware, you know, as I say, you're not gonna be looking right at it as you're driving down the road. You know? I mean, I drive in, I drive on the highway and it's, you start driving down, next thing you see is, you know, you got all these. Uh, warehouse facilities off the side of the road with these, you know, these little mini mall type places. And I'll tell you, i- it's like, you know, you drive, you know, you drove past there. Five years ago, it was trees, it was wooded, it was beautiful, you know, rural town, now all of a sudden there's. Fifty five warehouses lying aside of the highway. You know? So. So back to the zero front, it looks like there's only two or three locks that are actually zero frontage.
Correct.
Out of the eight or eleven.
That's correct. Correct, yeah, and, and that's a legacy of.
Yeah.
Essentially. Pre America. Parcelly, parcelization of this area, I mean. Uh, Mr. Meskis was describing some of the, it was the king's land for a long time and some of these. Partial lines even go far, as far back as that. So, and then, of course, the transmission lines and things like that chop, slice and dice. But I do think it's worth, you know, asking the question, you know, why is frontage important? Why is that a minimum requirement to start with? What is the purpose behind you?
I agree with minimum frontage, I agree with frontage, you have to have it in order to, but, but just because you have frontage doesn't mean whatever you're doing has to be. Right there at the front of that.
Correct.
It could be fifty. Yards, hundred yards, two hundred yards back and hence you don't see it. So I, I like. Seems like. If you don't have frontage, it's basically a landlocked piece. Trying to do something with a landlocked piece is not easy, but maybe that's a good thing.
You have to agree with your neighbors and.
Maybe it's a good thing just to have it.
Just the way it is, that's what happened.
Do taxes lower?
May I offer a revision? Um, I would propose that minimum frontage. Would be set to what is essentially a minimal requirement for emergency access. At thirty feet.
That's, that's only twelve feet.
Yeah, well, I mean.
It's only twelve feet.
So you're saying. It's. I was taking into consideration the.
Two way.
The apron.
I think, I just, I, from. Well, one of the. Uh, special preference we had might work, minimum frontage of fifty feet. I think that's a, would be a start. That's a special permit, that's a.
Right, you know what's going there.
Yeah.
Somebody was supposed to pose a.
One.
April, you know.
Subdivision.
Fifty feet, you know, just like the Larry's Way and, you know, the other one table fifty feet, so.
And I don't.
Be the same standard.
I don't agree with any of those paper.
Well, I'm, no, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, cause like, I just said, I mean, even if you have like back lane, you have fifty feet of front, you wanna do a cul-de-sac subdivision, boom, you got it.
Yeah.
It's more than sufficient enough, those frontage for that for access.
Maybe open those, create frontage for all their lot, right.
I would support that.
Okay. Now, are you open to a uh? Host agreement?
I am, right?
Within the bylaws.
Certainly.
No.
No?
I, no, what if we wanna change the host agreement, then it has. The, the mentioning of a host agreement can be in bylaws, not the actual.
Cause I don't see the mentions in here. Is it, did I miss it?
Well, so.
No, they took it out.
If you recall, we originally had, we were calling it revenue share.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry.
And I spoke with Ms. Kathleen Stanley, the assessor, she recommended that we remove that language, we still have the pilot language, the payment in lieu of taxes. Should anything about the taxing change, um, but that. Her recommendation was, or it would be most suitable to not include that, but through this. Special use permit that it's conventional in Charlton and I think in Medway as well. To establish those host community agreements through the special use permit and that.
Charlton is a whole, I don't think it's very common to be highly, the whole millennium tower. So, so a whole community would probably be the way.
You can do both, the town of Medway has both and I emailed our, our assessor to let her know. Yeah.
So perhaps, yeah, I would, I would be. That's fine, I mean, that was our original intention, just to have a.
Well, if I could, that original revenue share, it sounded good at twenty thousand. But then we got two hundred and fifty thousand for sidewalks, eighty five thousand for firemen training and it. But then we got two hundred and fifty thousand for sidewalks, eighty-five thousand for firemen training, and it lowered a little bit over four years. So. And that's just touching the icebergs, and Department of Public Utilities is working on it. So, wh- which, I understand you have to make money, but in the beginning. When they sell it, is when the most money is exchanged. So that's when we have to look out for our residents.
But if you get a host agreement, that's off the table.
What's off the table?
Worrying about the residents.
No, that, that gives them some money other than. Taxes, a pilot, because we have to, we're losing, it's tying up land that could have services, it. It's deforesting acres.
What kind of service, kind of, kind of lot on Fort Worth Road that by the height?
By him, Ross.
By the height, what, no, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm thinking outside the box here, I was looking at it as a whole.
But if Midway got it, why wouldn't Charlton be able to get it, right?
Yeah, well, you're talking about services, when you tie up Route twenty.
Probably not as good.
Um. You'll never get anything for twenty years, so it's just something to keep in mind. And we have to live with traffic from Amazon, so you get a host agreement. What I'm saying is, why can six landowners change the entire structure of our town? I mean, when do we say, whoa, whoa, throw in the, hang the white towel, we've done enough? Um, if. If you support this or if you don't, it'll go to town meeting.
Yeah.
The residents will talk.
Yeah, process.
It's gonna do a disservice if you haven't, you're hashing this stuff out.
And I, I mean, I'm getting back to the whole, piece of land provided in the service. Cause this isn't even zone for a certain, if you use a comparison of Route twenty.
I'm just saying, Ross.
It's, it's, I'm just talking apple to apple.
What's the number one thing people complain about? We have enough services, we have high taxes. We're letting util, public utilities in, that we don't get taxes, so we, we, public utility. So. If, what are we leaving our children? I'm, I'm almost okay with one next to each substation and calling it a day. But this massive area. It's too much for. I mean, we've done enough for renewable energy for the entire state, not to mention LNG. We are known, and batteries can be located anywhere, just not massive. Extra huge utility batteries. And I had that validated today. Just like Larry's Way, right in the power, up to five megawatts.
Yeah, I will point out, those are distinct resources than what we're proposing. The, the five megawatts and under, those are typically. Combined with. Solar projects or.
Not the town, we allow freestanding five megawatts.
Well, I'm just saying in terms of what we, this is more of a utility service provider, it's a flexible resource for the grid. It can serve in.
Same with five megawatts, they're, they're flexible, they help the grid too, they're not. They're not adjacent to solar, they don't take it immediately off. Which I would like to see, since we have thirty of them, and it's just they don't make the money. Doing small amounts, whereas a company comes in, this would be, like I said, the possibility is the biggest right now in the country is. Eight hundred and fifty megawatts, so. A lot to think about.
Yeah, but the other thing is also what can the substation handle?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it does, because.
No, no. These are used when the.
Because, you know, I could, you know, if you, you put a. Uh, you know, your, was it eleven, last meeting you said eleven thousand megawatt. Facility in. If the substation can only handle a hundred and fifty megawatts at most. At any time, that's all you're gonna be able to put into it.
I think I would go back to the, I'd go back to the explanation of the bucket and the faucet.
Yes, yeah.
You don't need it all.
The substation's gonna take the faucet, but then there's the bucket.
Correct. Yeah, so they need, like, west end substations maxed out, that's why they had to do the temporary.
So they can be, maybe upgraded, can you use new technology to upgrade them?
That's a national grid thing.
It's already being upgraded, possibly.
It is, yes.
So.
I gave paperwork last meeting, you also approved it.
National grid does have to be, it in the works to update the, uh, substation or building. Larger substation on Carpenter Hill Road, that's already in the works, you know, to replace the temporary. And also provide more power to what's already existing there.
So potentially, if, we're saying, oh, the constraints are natural because the substation. So much, but if that's upgraded, then it kind of changes the whole game, so. I'm not. I have no issue with the project, I just wanna make sure that we have all the correct.
Information?
Information and the. And, like, Louis said, the worst case scenario, so when we, when it's put in front of the residents, that we can say. You know. Here is this, and this is what. The options are, and, and not in a scary way, but in, in an honest way, because, I mean, that's, that's what we need to do.
And we do have a goal, Massachusetts has a goal X number of megawatt storage, so this would be a big feather in the cap for them to meet their goal.
All right, go ahead, John.
So, so number three, uh, number three, the use permit. Use table. R forty, you have a special permit on R forty, why, why is that?
Um. So you're asking about the, the four?
Yeah. Well, no, 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 R forty, just R forty, you have a special permit.
All right, so basically, this, this amendment is showing on page fourteen, under amendment three. So as part of the procedure to just implement this overlay district, we have to update the use regulations table. To include this principal use utility scale energy storage. And what this table is saying is that. Through a special permit. And you would be permitted to apply for a. Utility scale energy storage system in agriculture and R forty districts. And then that number four, that's by the SP. Basically says, so long as you meet the overlay standards. And that includes. Everything we've been talking about from frontage to lot size to setbacks. And it said?
Four acres minimum.
Correct.
So, you, you're in a densely, R forty district. And some people get together and get four acres. They would be entitled to put a battery.
If they fall within these overlay districts, that is shown on this.
Just for that overlay.
Correct.
Which would not happen, because there's no. That's, that's all agriculture, right?
Yeah, there's no parcels in R forty, I think that's what he's getting at.
Well, so they're all around west, west Charlton is R forty and, and Carpenter Hill is A, is agriculture. But that, that, um, subscript or superscript, that, that shows the four. That's, that is what. That is the key that, um. Restricts. Only two properties that are within the boundaries of this overlay. And are meeting all the development requirements, including setbacks, distance from transmission lines. Um. And we also.
One property. With two point four. And that's new. Going to your table.
In, in, in some cases, that's the, that actually should take, be taken out, because that's New England Power and that's.
So you have nothing in R forty, in R forty. So why shouldn't it even be considered?
Um, these, these parcels are R forty.
One, three, two, A, one, and three, two, A, twelve.
John, the map's up there, anyway, you see the yellow? It's further down, almost near the Sturridge line.
Far left.
Yeah, basically.
It's thirty-two, A, six, B, E, P.
Sam, someone?
Yeah.
That's, that's the.
Correct, Sam, correct.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, that, you actually wouldn't be allowed to do battery storage on that parcel. According to this. That even.
So take the four acres out.
That's allowed, that's fine. Or, you could.
Yeah. So, yeah, you can still, yeah, I should say.
It's not high, it's over.
Can't do grid storage.
So, third, two, A, six would be eliminated.
Unless they rezone to either A or R forty.
Your four acre minimum. Um. One eighty-one Sturridge Road includes a home.
Mm-hmm.
And with setbacks and all, that wouldn't qualify, right?
It still would potentially, let's see, which one are you talking about? One eighty?
Mr. Pentos.
So, it meets the minimum size. And so long as it's in excess of two hundred feet of that residential structure, it should be okay. Two hundred feet of that structure, two hundred feet of. A right of way. And, and a hundred feet from buildable lot lines. So, i- i- it's conceivable that there could be at least portions of a project from that. Side.
And, you mentioned, um. On one or more contiguous parcels, what, again, let's go now again, and there it is.
Yes, so. This kind of goes back to last, last. Meetings, conversation, we talked about projects straddling parcel lines.
Yeah, so it was, um, Carl Stores, project, property.
Yeah, I don't know if we talked specifically on any particular parcel, but. Um, if there were one or more contiguous parcels. That apply for a special use permit, they, within this overlay, they would.
They would be allowed to straddle their property boundary, that's. So that's what we ran into before. We had a project on Osgood Road and Fitzgerald Road split. It came in as one project, and that, so what if. Carl Stores and then. The other gentleman have a change of ownership?
They would have to notify the board if they have any change within sixty days of the change.
That's Ebbele's property.
The use is already there.
Well, right now it's all for us, so. So that owner would know we wouldn't need to. Project, project. Okay, just wanted to make sure everyone's aware. I mean, it's more cost effective for, for you to build it.
Well, I think the, the important thing is that, first and foremost, the development standards need to prioritize safety. And with the setbacks that we've. Required, that we're achieving basically the best practice for safety with energy storage. Beyond that, even with respect to the conversation on minimum frontage and so forth. I don't find that there's a rational nexus with those requirements and what battery storage as a use requires, because we're not, you know. There's multiple reasons for that, but. First, as so long as basically safety, emergency access. Are provided, I think that, you know, we want, we actually wanna make for efficient land use projects, we wanna make. And sometimes, you know, especially in this case, where there's sort of these legacy parcels that. To some extent are legally non-conforming. You know, we need some flexibility to work with those parcels and maintain safety and maintain efficient land use.
You, um, under minimum setbacks from residential buildings, two hundred feet.
Correct.
If I'm a single family home adjacent to it up on Carpenter Hill Road, so you would be two hundred feet from my house.
At minimum.
Right, on solar, we had developers coming before the board stating they were. Or were five hundred feet from the house, but they were right up to the property boundary, so you're basically rendering that homeowner. Uh, their, their usable land now becomes affected. So where it abuts, like, we had where it abuts, like, R forty residential homes, even though there may not be one there. Two hundred feet from the property boundary, so if somebody wants to put a pool in the backyard, they don't have to look at batteries.
Well, we have to be at least a hundred feet. From buildable lot lines, so if that, if that, in that scenario.
I see that.
Yeah, so, you know, minimum a hundred feet from that property. And we also have to meet the minimum standards for visual concealment.
Mitigation.
Yeah. And that's at the discretion of the board to determine if we're satisfying that requirement.
Um, the, the, it doesn't look like you have. Fencing requirements, we, it was somewhere early on.
Well, we refer to the large-scale solar ordinance when it comes to fencing, essentially eight feet.
Is there a chance we could increase it to ten feet for batteries?
Well, what we have now already, that's what the ones that we've done.
Six. We requested eight eventually.
It's all we've done on the ones that is approved, like down on, um. Portaway and. Other ones.
I don't know, it might be newer.
Is that what it was, six? Or, like, the, uh, battery storage on Portaway, what do we do there for fencing allow, height?
Six.
Six feet?
Yeah.
Ross, I believe, I believe it's eight feet.
Go ahead, Tom.
Sorry about that, I believe it's eight feet, is what we have on our sites.
Okay, thank you, Tom, for clarification.
Yeah, it's National Electricity Code, that it must be eight feet.
Okay.
And because these are so, such a soft target being so large. Um. You're, you mentioned extra security, so we're gonna ask about that because of the soft targets that we already have with LNG. Soft targets of terrorism. Substations are getting.
Fifteen-year-old boys.
Yes.
Forward on a Saturday night.
But, yeah, it's, it's, um, it's a way to affect the national grid, so. Unfortunately, we haven't talked about those.
Hey, no, I haven't seen, I haven't seen anybody.
Maybe we're getting more into project stuff, but this also includes lighting or not?
I don't see security at the grid. Typically, that's handled to be. They typically, you know. Twenty-four seven lighting on them.
The brownie wire.
Turned on whenever somebody get a go and service to the project, should it be nighttime or something. So, that, that's something the plan board has control over. To the special permit project, they can, you know. Limit, the lighting isn't on twenty-four seven, only while somebody's there servicing. You know.
Probably that traditionally the way. These battery storage parks are set up.
Yeah, minimal light, lighting required, and we shield. The lighting downward, the only time that it would turn on during the night is. If you have a super deer that can jump over the fence, um, trigger the, the sensors, or if there's a maintenance requirement, we're not all the night. Um, but we will shield the light and, and. Uh, we can provide photometric plans to. To show that lighting.
Really, sir? The, the question, the, the, the comment came up about terrorism. Uh, you know, we've had substations in town for many, many years, and we, we're well past nine eleven. I don't see. Somebody going to try to take out a battery storage facility. In the middle of nowhere, I can see them trying to take out the substation, I can see them taking out a power plant. But. You know, that's. I, I'm just throwing that out there because it just. You know, it just, it seems far-fetched. I mean, I mean, I've dealt, I've dealt, I, I, I will say this, in the la- in the la- in the last thirty-five years, I have dealt with terrorism. And I have dealt with, uh, you know, enemies in this country, uh, you know, and. I will say, a, a battery storage facility is probably gonna be their very last. Point that they're gonna even try to look at, as I say, they'd probably go for an LNG tank before they do that, and the thing is. They're not gonna go after an LNG tank, because more than likely. That, they're gonna need that. Okay, they're, they're smart, they, they, they're strategic, and I will tell you that. I mean, I can't go into too much detail about it, but. I can tell you that that's probably gonna be one of your last thoughts.
So are you proposing no fences?
No, no, I have no, I have no issue with fences, because it'll tend to keep wa- wildlife out, it'll tend to keep people out. But, you know, to say that, you know, we're gonna have ISIS or Hamas try to take out. The battery storage facility on Carpenter Hill Road, that's far-fetched.
All right, what do we have left of time, as far as the Gornian, make a division of this?
It's going to be on the, uh, annual. It's going to be on the annual town meeting as we submitted to Andrew by April seventeen.
Okay.
So we have basically one more meeting where the board has an opportunity to make a decision on the application. Is that we still have to prepare to be put on the warrant, but.
All right. Do we want?
Jesus, a dead date.
Gotcha. As a board, do we want any more information? I know that you had mentioned something about looking at that frontage thing.
Just to have the attorney, just to have.
Yeah, can we do that?
I'm sorry, I was, I was just going to ask, did, did we want to get something in there about requiring a, a, a town agreement or a host agreement? There was some talk on that, I wasn't sure where we, we fell on that one.
Thanks, Don, for bringing that back up, I think something's been made, a house agreement shall be reached with the town prior to special point of the law. Notice a perceived construction formation. Some sort. You fine with that?
Yeah.
No caps.
I'll talk to you.
We, would you consider a cap on number of projects in total, mega watt D C? We cap, we cap solar at thirty projects at five. Just so we don't add up the Pittsburgh of steel here.
If I may ask for.
I think that's a, I think that's a fair request.
Are you talking about capping the amount of storage?
The amount of projects and projects and storage, we, right now, we, we capped solar at thirty with five megawatts because.
Yeah, well, how many do we have already?
We have thirty.
No, battery, battery.
Uh, you, well, that, we don't, those are five and under. This is the potential of two hundred times three.
Four more, Mr. Wes has said, I don't correctly come wrong. They've proposed two at a hundred fifty, that's three hundred and potentially one more, that's four fifty.
Okay.
Two or two fifty each.
I could crunch numbers and propose a, a maximum, if that, I actually.
Yes, that would be a hint.
Maximum number in that, in this overlay district or total?
In town, total.
Because, no, because it has to be separate, because it's just overlay district only, so you have to be all in the over. So therefore, for whatever the pot, potential larger battery storage that they're talking about in different part of town, that would be off the table for that number then.
Cool. Say that again.
Know the, know the potential other project that was talked about in another part of town, it's a large solar and battery?
Yeah.
That would be off the table because it's not in the overlay.
But if we allow this overlay, you can change it on the town hall floor to increase more. Or, we're allowing an overlay here.
Yeah.
Um, was he on the call?
No.
Um. It, yeah, it's very possible that this opens the floodgates.
But the cap is only for the overlay district and not townwide. Just make that clear.
Yeah.
I, I think you have to do that because you can't do townwide because you have five megawatts, five megawatts. So different than, than solar loss in that it's, the detrimental runoff, if there's thermal runaway in the, the groundwater when we're all on wells, it's very different than solar and their P F A's slowly reaching down.
Yeah.
I just think this is such a new industry that we should cut our teeth on getting thirty at the, at the solar fields.
We called the town meeting when they voted on the solar, the planning board had recommended forty. And then some, one, two, how many do you have now? With thirty, okay, it's limited to thirty, because they didn't want any more.
We had all those subdivisions coming in the free zone, so. That's always.
But they, I'm, they, they're likely maybe residents, you know, we don't know, it's up, you know.
Yeah, because some of this land is near residents now.
They might turn around and one minute more than even one, the bylaw or one that.
There is residential, um, the, uh, Juniper Hills apartment houses over there, and then we have residential of Carpenter Hill to G French. It's a.
T Hall.
T Hall. So you have residents that are completely unaware of this, so I would hate to, to get bad looked down upon, bad press that we didn't do our best to, to let the town know what's coming, because most people don't know what battery is. And not to bring up a such a bliss film. There's a solar project and they reamed this company apart.
We, we have.
I'm sorry, it's so nice.
I'm not familiar with that particular one, you're saying ESA got reamed?
Yeah, it's, uh, they were claiming too much was done behind the scenes before it came forward to voters. So I just don't want to see us going through that.
All right, John, go ahead.
Here we have, just in case somebody read this, legal counsel, read this proposed language conceivem, it's even feasible or desirable this. But it's referring to everything precisely.
Make sure it's protected.
Yeah. But Mister Meskis' recommendation for approval was to include a condition that it is vetted by a legal representative prior to town meeting.
Yeah.
We did that with soul.
But you're not suggesting.
Or you approve it.
Jim Cott.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, not Clasbro, Bobrowski or, um, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you include the, the verbiage of that, that you made on the straddling the property lines from Mister Bobrowski, so we don't run into splitting the project?
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, all right, we have a motion to continue this public hearing till, uh, April fir- third. April third.
Your right name.
Yeah.
April third.
We can motion to continue the ESA over energy battery storage district to April third.
Second.
House in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thanks, Wes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you guys for showing up. All right. Do you have anything else, any new stuff coming in, Randy, since you've already done the A and R, you did some other business, especially we got a, uh, draft minutes that you made.
Yeah.
Another other business, unknown the time of holiness, we're drafting.
Yeah, I see.
And I, and I have this one, I think.
Yeah.
Is a, an update on the, um.
Yeah.
Decommissioning bond policy.
Yeah.
I have made.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Hey, Rob. See you later. Thanks, Dave, have a good night.
Thank you.
So, Ross, one, one minute, um, so the question was a decommissioning bonds policy?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that, was that a, a question on the decommissioning bond policy?
Bill's going to give us an update, I had some modifications.
Okay.
He's going to, just look, his draft minutes, yes.
Okay, have we gotten any, um, any traction on, on tracking these bonds to see, uh, who's tracking these bonds and, and what's available? Have, have we talked to, um, somebody in, in the town hall?
No, I, I haven't, um, I think we, that's still an outstanding task to, to, to perform.
Is, is there somebody that that's assigned to, or are we? Is, was, was Randy going to go down and, and, and chase that down?
Uh, I'm sort of, when I have time, I've been getting.
Yeah.
The solar ones that we have and getting.
Yeah.
Lock, lock, map, map, lock, lock.
Right.
And trying to track down the owners.
Yeah, yeah.
Email trail about this whole entire thing, so everybody's paying attention that we're being collected and everybody's paying attention and not, things aren't happening for people who aren't paying, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not too sure about that.
We just make sure that there isn't, yeah, it's not, um.
It's not being around now.
So we should make sure that they're.
Not monitored very well.
There should be definitely a formal email sent to say, this is an issue. Somebody needs to do it, who's taking responsibility, who owns it, and.
Yeah, or at least a project leader.
Think, um, obviously ancestors have to get them on that.
There has to be some sort of control in place that doesn't allow things to happen, like it has to, it has to be like an official control that, you know, something that, that is really triggered that does this, they can't do anything because they owe us money or the bond's not something, something.
What happens is it changes owner and nobody knows that it changes owners, and I've found that on a couple already, you know, we have it listed under one name and.
Is that because we did the bonds incorrectly?
I don't know.
Because if it's cash there, someone's going to want their cash back, right? So in the future, in the future, everything will be cash, right? Is that what's going to happen? Can we make that?
Be attached to property like a, like a lien too, I mean, it goes with that property and it can be tr- tracked to that property, not just the owner?
Yes. That's what I thought was going to happen, but that has not happened.
Right, a deed restriction.
Yeah, yeah.
It would show up on title search, you do a transfer, right?
Can we easily get our money that way, though? It's something happen.
It's a natural buyer, a treasure.
Yeah, so we, we have to know what money is there first because we don't, we don't even have that information, so, um.
We talked about tracking down the bonds and making on these solar, make sure they're still legit and up to date. Yes, so it's, to figure out that no one's really been following, keeping.
Yeah.
With them.
Can never win the old tax collector was very good about that.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened in the transition, but it doesn't seem to be any type of spreadsheet or anything that tracks all the money that comes in, because some of them, they actually pay a fee yearly and they keep coming to this office like, no, that's for the bond, and they're like, what for?
So they, if there are formal email or formal evidence documentation correspondence that says there's an issue, let's all, let's all figure out who owns this and, and what's our action plan, what's our action plan for, right, to prevent it from ever happening again, can, can we? Does it?
So it's just paper, it's just a bond, it's, it's not like we're putting money in the bank or anything.
No, and typically when we have bonds, that, we have to like eke through literally every application, but there may be no other way to do it. It's to open up all the solar applications, you know, whenever this decommissioning bond language, at least since I've been here, we put it inside the, a copy in the application holder. So that, you know, years from now, somebody can open it and say, oh, okay, this one had a lot of dollars, you know. So.
I thought, wasn't, wasn't there an issue about making it, making them be cash bonds or something, because?
Because there was something at the time.
Some, there was a way that was better in, in our, in, in the town advantage to do it a certain way, I.
Well, it's just to go to the, you know, the Tim Burton project that, that is easier, but I think that requires cash from the African, which not all Africans, you know, want to do that, at least. Excuse me.
For these big giant projects, I mean, if you're investing nearly a ton of millions of dollars to do a project, you should, they should have some cash, right?
Um, I believe it was two projects that you guys did the twenty-five percent cash in S Row following the parcel, and that was Osgood Road and Coburn Road. So it was just two projects, because this was done after you guys started requiring decommissioning bonds. Alan Gordon did not on private land, so probably twenty of them are on private lands where there's no bond whatsoever. And they, they believed that a lien on the property would be enough leverage to get it cleaned up. But as we know, some of this, the hazmat and disposal costs outweigh the property, the property value of having twenty-five acres of solar panels. So there's no bonds.
So what, so is there a way to get a bond?
We did, we did add, if they add a battery and we prove that with the lawsuit, the zero point sued us, it is changing the use and you can correct your error for not having a decommissioned bond, so.
Planning board, you know them by that, of the apple, because it's a safe plan modification.
So it's an advantage for everybody to add the batteries.
Yeah.
Exactly, for us, but they, they're not adding the batteries, I believe, because of that. Um. Where we allow them, and, and as you know, their, the profit is in the large battery parks, not on adding to solar, which makes solar worth it.
So they're grandfathered.
I don't think so, not after the dark.
If, yeah, if they add a battery, you can, that's it.
That is a change.
If they change, if they change something on the site, like different types of solar panels or something, does, does that trigger a change?
Well, it's a major, it's a plan enough to put it before this board.
They're getting better, you know.
A new application of some sort. Bottom of the thirty, there's only ten bonds.
Yeah, no coverage.
Do they have to pull the building permit, do they have to pull the building permit, like if they were going to change out their solar panels, the technology? Upgrade, like if, if it's the cost.
I would sue the seller because I know they need a bill of permit to install them in the first place. And it's, they may, you know, not necessarily building, but electrical, but it is a building.
Can some, can a new bond be attached to that?
No, it's not through the planning board.
Yeah, I don't.
Can, probably bonds will go.
Building, you know, perspective, I don't know.
If legally, if that kind of change, if they, if they upgrade all their solar panels and have to go through current to pull a permit or then they, we, we couldn't say, oh, you triggered something by doing something and now you need a bond.
The only, the only way is, uh, if the facility, I mean, if they came in and put in all the panels and say they had to change a bunch of the equipment to go with it, it might be enough to trigger a site plan modification, which they have to move back, we told this board. But that would typically be at the end of a twenty-year life cycle, that might be too little, too late.
You have an update on that?
So the decommissioning bond policy that we have today, I've, I've looked at that and digested every page of the scooter and binder in front of me, so. Glory is good counsel, what, what, I think my proposal is to change it from a decommissioning bond policy to a decommissioning plan policy, which basically, so here's the whole summary right here. Instead of saying, we're going to charge you two hundred and forty dollars per megawatt, says, you tell us what the decommissioning project cost will be, including disposing and recycling and hazardous waste and transportation, tell us what your cost will be. Engineer, line item, that, give us that report, that is going to be your decommissioning bond amount, basically.
And we'll have that reviewed by engineer.
Yeah, their engineer submits it to us and we, you know.
Yeah.
And so we get rid of the two hundred dollars per megawatt, we get rid of that off, we let them tell us two hundred thousand per megawatt. They tell us, well, we have to remove the fence, pull up this, recycle the glass.
What about if they forget a lot of things?
Or they remember, remember.
They have an engineer submit to us and our engineer reviews and say you forgot.
That it was a different type of panel in the estimate, remember that back then?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Like, they submitted all this stuff saying, we use this panel because it makes a difference, and the panel was like this serial number and it, and it was much different than what it really costs to get rid of the other panels, so the, but our engineer didn't caught that because you need a special solar engineer. So I, like, Mike wouldn't be able to, wouldn't catch that, so, um, um, that's the only thing, um, um, that we're able, is, is that they could.
Qualified, actually.
They could, um.
Qualified decommission.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure if, if this.
It may, those amounts can fluctuate, I'll give them that, but they've overestimated, uh, recycling amounts. They just merely said removal, so we were getting decommissioning bond totals of, say, fifty thousand dollars for an entire solar field because they had no disposal cost. And they told us that, right, they were, and I remember Ross, you and I chatted, well, it was, it's recyclable. Yeah, but it's not free, recycling is very expensive, so.
So, so I uploaded the draft of this in, uh, we have on SharePoint site, and so it's in today's meeting, I put the draft of the decommissioning plan thing, love your comments on it.
And we have to take in consideration, when we do that, just to make sure that it's, uh, done on that, because it'd be done at town level that we have to, you know, charge accordingly. I'm sorry, now I'm letting you out.
Prevailing wage and.
Yeah, that's it.
You know, it's not a problem, you have prevailing ways, thank you. That, you know, we have to take that into consideration. If the town has to do it, we have to go by prevailing ways, so that might add two percent to every. If the town has to do it, we have to go by prevailing ways so that my dad send two percent to every. You know, be whatever maybe.
The worksheets have been very similar, from project to project across the state. It's just they don't have disposal and then the state and I've been meeting with Sean Silver of the D E P. Has the solid waste advisory group, so I've been listening in and they have subgroups. They are against banning solar panels. In saying outright banning it in the waste stream, they feel that there's not enough infrastructure yet. And I'm like, but cart before the horse, you ban it, so then people see the money in it, you do it. And if they last a little longer, you do have time to set up some kind of disposal process, but. Like I said, I I called waste management and they would not allow a truckload of solar. Just because we don't know what's in them. So that's.
Hey, uh this is a, this this is Nathan. Hello, can can I make a comment? This is Nathan Hightower from ESA.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the um battery disposal issues associated with um. Um with the discussion and there's an entire secondary battery market that has been developed for this very reason. Kind of what was early said already about that market for PV, they didn't develop a secondary PV market at the time. Um and so, yeah, it's latent there, but the secondary battery market is 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 working solidly right now. Um and it's actually, I wouldn't say it's ahead of the curve, but it's certainly uh with the curve. Uh in terms of the development of energy storage so far, so I just wanted to add uh that statement. Uh to the kind of for the record here. Also, I would just add one other uh statement that was made earlier about um. Large projects and injection into the grid at this level. Um just wanna be careful with smaller projects that are lower, very small megawatt projects, like under ten megawatts. Those are normally on a different system, they're usually on a uh distribution system versus a transmission system that we're looking at here. So I just wanted to add those two comments, a little color in that as we discuss that. Uh then the last thing I'd like to say too also, if I could, is with regard to the de- decommissioning bond and excuse the background noise here. Um but I I would just say this, that there's normally a a a. An engineer that does a pre-engineering assessment on all things regarding um. The system uh decommissioning plan and that has to be generally approved, that would be what we would follow, that's what any system developer would have to follow. And then that, whatever that estimate is, usually it's um, you know, a a approved, not just by them, but of course by the board as well. And so I just wanted to add a little bit of color to that because. Um at the end of life, uh whether it goes on beyond twenty years or not, there's normally an augmentation schedule for all the product if it does. And and that's agreed to, but that's all at the interconnection and um at the interconnection level and if you would at the um. Uh at at the um power purchase agreement level that that's decided upon. So it just wanted to add just a little color to this conversation if if that's that's acceptable.
All right, thank you for the information.
That makes sense?
Wanted to say though, the the town doesn't want to be in the business of shopping, but who's gonna give them? Most for the secondary use for the batteries, you know, when that's the business.
We don't net anything based on.
Solar panels used to be recyclable too and then all of a sudden China stopped buying them or whatever and then all of a sudden they weren't, so. We just need to always just pay attention to, again, the worst case scenario. And along with the bond, right? They can take it if if we don't need to pull it, we never pull it, we hope. We're just trying to be safe, that's all.
So um what Mr. Hightower mentioned, um there is secondary markets, but it's after you reclaim the lithium. With the batteries, so maybe maybe the storage container and all. Um, yeah, ISO, ISO New England accepts these smaller projects right into the distribution line, which I understand, that's kind of what we were saying. That they could go anywhere versus the huge utility amount. Um and then our decommissioning bond, we we were given information and you'll see it in your binder and we've talked about it several times. Uh the National Renewable Energy Lab, which is an arm of the EPA. Has a form online, it's in your book and it's approximately ninety seven thousand dollars per megawatt. For the decommissioning, so they compiled an estimate to help us. And that's the same group that had close to, well, if you take out the raw materials like the the. Scrap value on a solar field, they approved, um it's over four hundred thousand a megawatt decommissioning. So there's a government entity that did the work for us, so we were trying to. Simplify what you guys look at every week with the worksheets by giving it a dollar amount. And it's a very reasonable bond amount based upon N R E O. That's, we got to take some guidance instead of everyone before us throwing out figures.
All right, anything else on that? If not, we'll do that uh.
Get some feedback and let's move, I think, forward with this as.
Yeah, and thank you for doing that.
I did finally find out yesterday, I was trying to reach out to Michael Brouck here since he's supposedly got back from Antarctica. Found out that he's now in the Caribbean. It's kind of like working retired from what I understand, so he's not in a big rush, I mean, he's. The best in the business with trying to. Nail him down to do something that's difficult.
For for time's sake, do we do we still deal with McKay or is there another?
Still waiting to hear back from him, so I doubled the time and went and reached out to him.
Dave McKay is uh been, you know, I think he has had a lot on his face, mostly got hurt, but uh. Did Peter Falk, I'm trying to think of his, Brian Falk, I had. That he's actually been pretty. Good about getting back to me quickly and everything, so you know, I talked to David Kane, said, do you mind? Just because, you know, we're in a time constraint here, we can't just leave things hanging forever, so.
Want the, it we the information for the decision is, again, we want to do the best, the rest, we're putting in the residents, we want to make sure that we we we're solid.
All right, we got the draft minutes in front of us.
And just to.
Go ahead.
Close ahead, one other thing that that Patsy brought up, the administrative, can we? Have someone take an action item to actually track down the list of solar fields and bond amounts. Meet with the assessor, like this is gonna take, I think, more than, we're just like part-time people here, it's gonna take a full-time person to go.
It will be a little bit of work, yes, just to go through and make.
Make sure something is in in email documented, so we're like, we're, everybody's protected.
Because we're we're gonna continue to forget about this, ask about it again another month from now.
That's one of those things that nobody wants to do. And and if it's, if it's not a nudge fact, or it's not in writing saying that this was the day, um it will, because.
We have more projects with zero point batteries coming forward, so it'd be interesting to know.
You want to fix it before it happens.
They're doing more and more, so.
So that's a nice way of requesting, Randy, if you can help to push this forward, thank you. Or a screamer, Jim.
Um the treasurer's office did it. I think that's who did it, yeah.
So it's it's somebody that needs to direct that office to to pull everything together. Is it something for for Andrew?
Yeah, maybe copy Angela on it.
I think it might have to, might have to come from from him.
Copy the, copy the chair, okay, blackboard.
Things might have changed a little bit, but they um the town did hire a. Like a lending person that is supposed to be shared with the department, she's been working for conservation the whole time, but. My understanding, she, you know, like helped this department, helped the building and everything, so maybe we can. Use it for a week or something to go through everything. She's a full-time employee, what's that?
I think she's still learning conservation.
Why, I know she is, yeah, but. Yes, she's.
I will work with who, because. As long as it's okay with Karen, um and we've been sort of out straight with elections and everything, but right now there's a little window. Between elections that Karen will let me, I will, because some of those papers are in the town clerk's office. With the.
Yep, so we do have a list of solar projects, so.
All right, we had a chance to look at the minute.
Oh, make a motion to approve in a minute, as accepted, no, yeah, as presented.
March sixth.
March sixth, March sixth, yes.
All those in favor? Abstain.
Abstain.
Anyone have anything else? All right, all those in favor? All right, we'll see you, John, have a good night.
Thank you.